Okay, we're going, we've gone live.
You sure?
It's showing on my side?
Yeah, now it's back, it's up.
Oh, it, okay.
Okay, I don't pay anything for that, okay. Uh, I hereby call the December 2020 meeting of the Albany Public Library trustees to order. Um, it looks like we might have, like, not all the trustees are present. Um, we do have, let me just call them out for the record. We have, um, Brigitte Cryer. We have Karen Strong. We have Sarah Dallas, Sarah Shear, and Tom McCarthy present at this time. I think that's all we have in addition to me, so, uh, for the record, that's what we have. And we are not expecting Ms. Wade tonight. And we are expecting Ms. Dr. Robinson a little bit later. So, uh, thank you, everyone, for watching, and I'd like to give the floor over to, it says on this, on my reference sheet, it's Melody, but it's Rebecca to talk about, Rebecca Delgado will talk about, uh, public comment, yes. So we're gonna talk about how public comment works and how the public can make a comment in the meeting. Is Rebecca here?
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out Zoom.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
I couldn't, I couldn't find out how to unmute, but I found it, I'm good. Um, so, yes, um, public comments, uh, if anybody has a public comment, this is the portion of the meeting that your public comment would be read. Um, there is a second part right before adjournment that public comments are also accepted and read. If you have any public comment, please email it to publiccomment@albanypubliclibrary.org. It's all one word, P-U-B-L-I-C-C-O-M-M-E-N-T@albanypubliclibrary.org. Of course, please identify yourself and what part of Albany you're from. Um, and again, that will be read during the meeting. We do ask that it is kept under five minutes, so, five minutes of reading. Um, and so far, we have no public comment at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Delgado, and I changed that in my, my personal guide to be your name and not, um, Tom Melody, so I shouldn't come along that next time. Uh, and we are going to the next piece of our agenda. I don't know how to see the agenda on the slideshow, so I'm over on my, um, for docs. But the next piece of the agenda is item two, 2.1, oh, no, I'm sorry, item three, is a presentation, and that is going to be a presentation from staff to tell us about the virtual programming. Very exciting, so I'd like to hand it off to the staff, we'll be making that presentation.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, share screen.
Did I, did I go too fast? Is everybody okay?
Nope, I am also getting used to Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, I could probably, whenever you're ready, take a small plate near me. Now that I've, of course, the product, product that we were trying to connect to earlier, that we couldn't get to connect, decided to connect, and then I couldn't get it to unconnect.
All right, I think I'm sharing my screen, gonna go to present.
So thankfully, I have the problem.
So, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Julia Pintamartin, I'm the branch manager at the Delaware Bridge. Uh, and today, myself and Amy McLaughlin, our community programs and partnership manager, will be speaking to you about programming at Albany Public Library, namely in 2020.
Sure.
Okay, so just for a brief history of programming at Albany Public Library, Amy and I did participate in an adult programming kaizen, which is a continuous improvement efficiency tool that was used to help define the adult programming process. And that was in September of 2017. It was a two-day session that led to the development of some standardized tools and practices that have come to be applied to all facets of programming in the organization. Um, this also looks at continuous improvement on existing documentation while introducing an evaluation schedule to receive participant feedback. So that is what we were working on before the closure for COVID. Uh, so programming during the pandemic in 2020, so March through May, the leadership really worked together to help divine what virtual programming would happen at Albany Public Library. Uh, the biggest challenge was that staff needed to pivot to a programming environment that they had little overall experience with. So, the plan was always to add virtual programming, um, but it's, with the onset of COVID, it really brought it to the fore, and we really had to jump on board and figure out how to do it. Um, additionally, the technology that was needed to successfully offer virtual programming was not readily available for staff to use at their home. Um, as a result of these early months, a lot of learning as we went, when it occurred. So staff, staff were given an opportunity to join small groups that were centered around specific topics like cooking, gardening, and reader's advisories for various groups. By doing this, staff were able to continue providing content for our community. Um, it was important for our library users to continue to see familiar faces of library staff that they suddenly weren't able to see much of anymore. On the staff side, these small groups also provided work-from-home opportunities for staff and also just created an opportunity for in-it-togetherness and camaraderie. So the small workgroups followed the successes of storytime and also the book groups that were among the first virtual content released by APL during those early months of the pandemic. Summer 2020, um, as the organization began to move towards staff returning to the building, the need for more structure in the way programs were created and executed came about. So staff had to balance the continuation of virtual programming with the new normal of daily library operations and other work in the building. Programming during this phase meant that to deliver consistently good-quality virtual programming, we had to prioritize what we considered essential or core library program. So these core programs included early literacy programming, support for school-age youth, jobs and career assistance, and life literacy. We also, we offer additional programs as capacity allows. Okay, so how are programming decisions and selections made? So what you see on the screen here are two examples of the documentation that programming staff at the library use to help successfully plan and then ultimately execute a program, a virtual program. So whether it be a live program or a recorded program. Um, so programming staff have been equipped with these tools and others in a digital toolkit that helps them plan programs. So it includes a detailed timeline and the workflow that you see that is in conjunction with the Creative Services and Communications Department. There's a flow chart of creating content for library-recorded programming, supply-purchasing procedure, of course, access to a programming spreadsheet where all staff programs are detailed, documentation for best practices for staff to use when they're recording storytimes at home, they're doing live programs on Zoom or Google Meets. And the biggest change is likely the proposal form for youth and adult programs, respectively, um, that staff need to submit that are reviewed by two committees, two programming committees that were not newly formed but re-adjusted to suit the need. So the program committees, I mentioned, we have an adult and youth program committees. These committees oversee and approve the programming proposals that are submitted by staff. Uh, the proposal forms are received on a continuous basis and reviewed weekly by each of the committees. The adult program committee did exist pre-COVID, but it had a different focus. It was more of a process committee that was helping to evaluate and continuously improve the programming process pre-COVID. And the youth programming committee was the early literacy committee, so everything just kind of morphed a little bit. Uh, the staff on these committees are a combination from various professional levels of the organization. We have, each committee has a head of branch, branch managers, librarians ones, and possibly library assistants. The staff that make up these are reviewed annually by leadership, and that will likely occur next June. Um, once the proposals are submitted and reviewed, the committees communicate with the staff person and their branch manager at their respective location to let them know of the concept approval or if additional information is needed before the program concept is approved. I will hand it off to Amy.
Thank you. So, how program decisions and selections are made? Um, first priority of, of the library resources go to meeting strategic plan initiatives and the core mission of APL, to educate, entertain, and empower our community. Um, a proposal must also set certain parameters in order to be approved by the committee. So the program must relate to the strategic plan, specifically language and goal one. Meeting community needs, we intend to align services with community needs by providing exceptional programs, material outreach, and public interactions that promote literacy, lifelong learning, and civic participation. Additional criteria might include the predetermined monthly themes that we set. These monthly themes will be set for 2021 by a joint mini-working group of the two committees. The program must relate to the library's core mission and priorities. So any decisions that are made outside of those parameters is deliberate and must be justified in some way. Organizational capacity is always front and center in every recommendation and decision made by either committee. And every attempt is made to ensure that APL is not duplicating the efforts of another organization and meaning to collaborate with other organizations whenever appropriate, as outlined in the strategic plan as well. So, we've seen a lot of successes with program. Um, but how we're defining virtual programming success is a little bit different than how we used to define success. The specific metric to measure programs is still being determined. Um, it's a little bit difficult to gather some statistical information about participation because many of the programs are set in webinar, we can't actually see attendees. Um, so some communication lines have gotten a little bit harder between us and the public for immediate reaction. Um, so currently, if the intended community, so say a teen program and teens attend, we're considering that as success. Um, some examples of successful programs include our First Saturday programs, which are averaging like thirty to forty people, book clubs for various ages. The weekly live storytimes have a steady audience. Um, I think they're getting at least twenty, twenty-five people a week for those. And the virtual tutoring with Albany Pharmacy School, um, every, every open appointment has been filled. That is temporarily paused, it will pick up in January when the tutors return. And the Marshall Lazarus Career Coaching and Resume Help has been hugely popular, as well as wellness programming, um, which we're doing with Noteworthy Resources. And we're also providing arts and culture programs, including a partnership with Albany Institute of History and Art. And we're doing craft and hands-on art programs with Albany Barn. Um, additional successful community partner collaborations include the Lantern Parade Kit Giveaway, the Social Justice and Art Series with Teyena Asili, the voter information presentation with the League of Women Voters of Albany, and the Day of the Dead workshop. So, those were the successes, um, but we faced a lot of challenges in virtual programming in 2020. Every program required more staff and time to develop and run. For example, live storytime requires a talent and producer who have had to learn new techniques and technology to successfully run a virtual storytime. That's in addition to preparing the typical storytime that they would have with stories and songs. The program has a vendor, there may be additional staff interventions needed to produce the program, even if we're hiring someone, because that person may not have as much technological savvy. Don't consider that in hiring someone because we want to have a variety of people to work with. If kits are involved, the purchasing, shipping, assembling, and appointments for pickup all must be communicated and coordinated across locations. Um, we've had a big challenge, and I touched on this before, was, um, participation feedback from patrons. While we're in the middle of running a program, like, normally in a storytime, you could read the room a little bit and adjust as needed, that's harder to do on a Zoom. And getting people to email us back with feedback is, has been a challenge. Um, we have to decide whether we're gonna use APL Zoom or Google Meets, it depends on the audience, it depends on the programs, a lot of decision-making and hard choices with technology go into every program we produce. Putting kits together and organizing the pickup between multiple locations gets a little bit hectic, but we have streamlined the process as much as I think it's possible to do at this point. So I feel pretty good about how we're doing that now. And we have, we know we traditionally serve the average user well, but we continue to struggle to serve those on the other ends of the spectrum. We are looking at a change in how we provide programming going forward. We're trying to expand our reach to members of the community who do not have access to technology and the internet. And additionally, engaging with patrons we may have lost during this crisis. We're going to have to continue to develop staff skills for a new type of content creation and supporting that staff and avoiding burnout. And also, we have to figure out how to overcome virtual living burnout for the public, which is a real thing, and I've been hearing that from a lot of our partners, that they're experiencing that within their own organizations. Programming will be done by registration only through APL's Phase Four and will prioritize Albany residents, uh, which is not a requirement that we've made in the past. Instead of large gathering, staff will need to run multiple sessions of the same program, and that is more staff-intensive and costly. It's a resource-heavy model, but necessary. So we'll see more one-on-one programming, um, that's emerged during COVID and that trend is likely to continue, and again, it's very staff-intensive. Committee work and project work will continue to include a cross-section of staff in order to introduce a variety of perspectives. And how we define success, moving away from numbers and measure attendee satisfaction or another metric. We're still gonna have to figure that out. So, collaborations with external agencies will primarily be with long-term partners. Um, an intentional focus will be made on developing programming that represents the diversity of our community, raises the voice of Black, Indigenous, people of color. To serve the non-average user, we will need to restructure and make hard decisions about what we do and do not continue to produce. Resource uncertainty is a concern which will necessitate difficult decisions on what we continue and what we need to strategically abandon. And the ultimate challenge is the unknowable and how to plan for a future we cannot imagine.
That concludes our presentation on virtual programming. Uh, any questions or comments?
Good job with creative programming in a really difficult time. There's been just amazing stuff happening, and I love the, um, to-go craft programs that you all have been.
Thank you.
Yeah, it, everyone works really hard to, to put it all together.
My second, and thank you so much for, uh, giving us the overview as well. Awesome.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I possibly didn't understand, um, one of the last things you were saying about, uh, breaking large events into, uh, smaller online groups. Um, I guess I'm not understanding, is there some sort of limit or capacity with online forums?
I wouldn't, I'm sorry, just to clarify, it wouldn't be online at that point. The small groups would be when we're prepared, um, and able to do in-person instantly. We might have a fifty-person dogman program, now we're gonna have to run five, ten people.
Got, so that's in-person, got it, thank you so much.
Yeah, sorry, that was.
Um, thank you so much for that presentation, I really, um, really appreciate the time you put into it and the attention you put to not just telling us how you're doing it, but talking, thinking about how it's changing what you do from now to the future. I think that seems like a theme with a lot of the COVID stuff, where we're learning new things quickly, sometimes really challenging and sometimes pushing us in ways we've needed to be pushed. So, um, I really appreciate that you paid attention to that. Um, how do you balance the external partners, um, working with, with long-term partners, and also lifting the voices of Black, Indigenous, and people of color? Because sometimes those long-term partnerships, that's not, that's not the group's thing.
Sure, um, that has been an intentional conversation we're having with partners. For example, one of our biggest partnerships we've been going through with COVID with is with Albany Barn. And very early in the 2020 planning, we said, "We want to hire a diverse range of artists." They actually had a better connection than we did to the pool of candidates out there. Um, that's been a very specific thing that we're doing with them.
Got it, thank you.
That was a magnificent presentation, and thank you very much. The only thing that you didn't touch upon was copyright and public performance. Can you share a little bit, do you feel comfortable sharing a little bit of that?
Um, I know our storytime team, so there are committees and then there are work teams under those, under those committees. Um, and the storytime team did the most work on that. Um, I, off the top of my head, I can't remember what determinations they came up with, but everything passed through with certain, is this, yes, this, if this, then that kind of thing. And, um, there was a time period when a lot of the authors and musicians were just allowing carte blanche use of their materials online, so we maximized that as much as we possibly could. Like the Harry Potter series we did in July, I think July was an example of that. Um, but we are conscious of that and careful with it. I, off the top of my head right now, I can't tell you, I mean, I can come back to you if you want, um, send something out about how we're doing that decision-making, but that was a very early-on discussion that they all resolved somehow, and they were satisfied with.
That's, that's sufficient for me, thank you so much.
And any vendor that we contract with, we do have an agreement with them whether or not it can be posted on our social and for how much time.
So I'm just gonna leave a little bit more wait time, just see if anybody comes up with another question. Great, so hearing no questions, no further questions, uh, about the presentation, I want to thank you again for the great work that's going on and for, um, giving us the overview and the detail. Thanks so much.
Thank you for hearing us. And I just wanna say, I, I've been talking to a lot of organizations and we're all kind of figuring this stuff out, and everyone's in a very similar boat than we are, so, I mean, there's comfort in that, so.
True. All right, thanks so much, really appreciate it. Um, we're getting ready to move on to the next agenda item, and that will be the consent agenda. So I'm gonna ask if anyone wants to set anything aside from the consent agenda to have a specific discussion on.
Matthew, I'd like to pull the minutes from the consent agenda.
Great. Um, is there anything else that we wanna pull? Okay, so, uh, hearing no further set aside, um, I forgot that we do this. Should we vote to approve the consent agenda without the minutes right now and then have our minutes discussion, or should we discuss the minutes first? Is a parliamentarian amongst us, no?
I think you just, you do vote on the minute, vote on the consent agenda and then talk about the minutes.
Okay, cool, and then, once we talk about the minutes, do we vote again, or no? We just talked about the minutes right now and then we vote for everything, okay? Um, so, we do have the set aside to talk about the minutes. Would, it would, um, oh, and before we go any further, I, um, noticed that two trustees have joined us, so in addition to the people we mentioned at the beginning, we welcome, uh, trustee Jennifer Betera and trustee, Dr. Brenda Robinson, and thanks so much. I know schedule is busy these days, so glad to have you here, and I just wanted to have that for the record. Um, so we are going to have a quick minutes discussion, and does everybody have their minutes up? Uh, there, Board Doc?
Matthew, I was suggesting that we vote on the consent agenda first.
Oh, we voted on the, okay, I was kind of going there, but then I wasn't sure, okay. Uh, so let's vote on the consent agenda, uh, before we take a vote, um, is there any, any further discussion about the consent agenda minus the minutes? Okay, hearing none, uh, shall we take our votes on Board Doc on accepting consent agenda minus the minutes?
I move to approve the consent agenda minus the minutes.
Great, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, uh, so that was moved by Karen Strong, Secretary, and then by Tom McCarthy, thank you. Oh, and I'm not logged in properly, I thought I was, I was so early, I'm very high in detail, let me get it. Here we go, I'm in, I don't see a get though.
You can always verbally announce your vote, I still, I need Matthew's vote, and I've got his vote.
I'm a yay, I got it, came up.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Sorry about that. Great, so, uh, the motion to accept the consent agenda minus minutes, um, has been accepted unanimously. Uh, the minutes have been set aside, so, uh, will Secretary Strong, who set them aside, like to, uh, have a discussion about that?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, President, and I just, um, we had talked at the last meeting and at the executive committee about adding action items to the, um, to the minutes, and that's something that staff had asked that trustees participate in. Um, and I made some suggestions for additions to that, and I, and I, I shared that in advance of this meeting, and I just wasn't sure what the process was to get those actually in the minutes.
Yep, I, the response was on the Personnel Committee, um, email string, so I think that's what threw me off, um, 'cause I added it to the public content, I'm pretty certain. But, um, I can add it right now, that's not a big deal. It'll just take a quick second. And, um, did you see?
I see, which, I, yeah, I, um, oh, yeah, it was, it was for the minutes for the main meeting.
Right, okay, so that, okay, I am trying to add it.
Do we close our minutes on board docs and open them when you tell us?
Um, I'll tell you, yes.
Okay.
And then you can decide if you want to re, to approve them or not, that's fine, it just, um. I'm so sorry.
Okay, perfectly fine, we're getting our minutes the way we like them, getting the process down.
And also, I just wanna note, whenever I make any changes, including taking an item out of the consent agenda or any sort of changes during the actual meeting, you'll just have to refresh your board docs and then you'll see the changes.
Great, good to know.
I am not finding. You can always go back to this, I don't, I can, I'll message you when I, when it's done.
Okay, why don't we go in that direction? So it's respected every time, thank you Rebecca, when, whenever you're ready, between that and let us know. So we will come back to the vote to approve the minutes. But for the, in the meantime, we're gonna move on to item number five on our agenda, which is the NAD. And includes the treasurer's report, capital fund report, balance sheet, operating capital fund and the final report section. So I'm wondering, I think it's Adam, who might walk us through some of this documentation a little bit, is that correct?
Yeah, I can, I can talk about these. I will also just mention, I, I know Karen had sent out an email with a few questions on these earlier and I did respond to that, so I hope everyone took a look at that, cause that's sort of, I think, addressed and hopefully helped clarify some of the more confusing aspects of these, these reports.
I've also, Adam, just wanna note that I've also included your answers in the information items memo, just so we have a record of those questions and the answers to those questions.
Okay, sure.
Great, yes, I did, I did see that and I thought that was very helpful, both the questions and your answers, so thank you, thanks for including that, Scott.
So I will just say on the, the main treasurer's report, that report shows where we are a third of the way through the fiscal year. So you can see our total expenses. Sorry, just need to pull up the report here. It comes out to thirty-two percent, so that's about thirty-two percent of the budget. So that's about right where we would wanna be a third of the way through the fiscal year. So even though there are a few specific lines that are significantly over, under, overall, we're, we're keeping pretty steady. And the areas that I look at that I was maybe concerned about at the beginning of the fiscal year would be salaries and employee benefits. But we are doing, doing okay there, so. That's good. I will also just note that we've included our balance sheets for this meeting, so you can get an idea of what our bank balances are. And you will see on this, the operating balance sheet that our checking account is, has over seven million as of October 31st. So we did receive the entirety of our tax levy, which is good news.
Great.
And then we have the, these final reports, which I did address in the, the email. These are all the reports from earlier in the year that were submitted as drafts. So Chuck did go through all of these and sign off on them. So these can be considered the, the final drafts of, of all those reports. And then also the, the capital fund report, we did reformat that a little bit to make it look a bit more like the, the regular treasurer's reports that we use. Still kind of a work in progress, but it's at least hopefully an improvement on the, the sort of rudimentary reports that were being submitted previously. And so if anyone has any questions on any of these reports, I'll be happy to, to try and answer them.
I especially, I thank you, Adam, and for responding to questions and especially for adding the, the balance sheet. That was really helpful to get a fuller picture of our finances.
Sure.
It seems like the, the finance committee needs to allocate some money to the capital fund? Or have we figured out how we're going to handle that?
So are you saying that because there's no revenue reflected on that capital fund report?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's because the, the money that was moved into the capital fund for the 2020 capital projects, that was moved during the stub year. So as a result, it's not, I mean, this is sort of an automated report, so that money is not reflected on the, on the, the 2021 reports? I, I mean, there is, we, we could put a line in there just so, cause I, I agree, it's, it's not entirely clear. It does make it look like we have, I mean, technically, we have no revenue post-July 1st going into the capital fund as of October 31st. So it actually is helpful to look at the capital fund balance sheet in tandem with this report to see you can see, we do actually have money in the, the capital fund account. But we could potentially add a line, just to make it a little clearer on the, the capital fund report, report to, to show the money that has been transferred from the, the general fund.
And so do we just know, is it, is it a rollover?
Um, yeah, on the, if you look at the balance sheet, I mean, some of the. So the capital fund balance sheet, it shows there's eighty thousand, just over eighty thousand in there. And some of that is left over from 2019, the, the 2019 projects that were not completed. So it does roll over and, and. Yeah, it's, it's just not reflected on this, this income statement essentially, because it was stub year revenue. I, I believe if you look at the, the stub year capital fund reports under the, the final reports section in board docs, you will see that transfer reflected in at least a couple of those reports.
When, when the facilities committee approves projects, they approve it with a budget, with a specific budget. So that would be our assumption of what the capital fund budget should be for that year. What has goofed us up a little bit was the stub year and not getting previous year projects done in time because of personnel changes. So I think we need to meet with the facilities committee and also the finance committee to kind of sharpen this process.
Yeah, just to be clear, I don't have any concerns about how the money is being spent or anything, it's just that it's, we're just figuring out how to do this in a way that's really clear and I, I appreciate all the efforts that are going into that, you know, we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah, like I said, the capital fund reporting, I mean, it's, it's been a work in process, you know, all year, so. I'm hoping we took a little step forward here, at least with reformatting the report. But yeah, I certainly understand your concern how it's not entirely clear where the, the money is coming from on, on the report. But I, I do think having the balance sheet in tandem with, with that is helpful.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification and thank you for the question. So I should probably announce that there is a change coming with the board treasurer. What do you think, secretary?
It's not up to me.
Well, we're expecting, if we haven't received it yet, Chuck's resignation. And I want to thank him publicly for his years of service. And that's why you see these final reports in here, he cleared up a lot of his stuff as he was leaving. So I'm, I'm not sure. Okay, I'm looking at the chat too. So I'm, I'm not sure if we actually received, officially received it, but I know that if we have it, that it's on the way. And Dr. Robinson? Your question?
No, I didn't have a.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, my bad. Okay, so I have to ask the board to forgive me here, but I always forget which of any of these are voting items. Could any of the parliamentarians or the people who set this up let me know if we're gonna vote on any of these items?
Under finance, Matthew, no. Just accepting those.
Thank you, thank you parliamentarian. Are there any further questions about the items in item five? Okay, hearing none, I suggest that we move back to the minutes so that we can approve the minutes from the December 2020 meeting that Rebecca has so graciously updated for us and that Karen was so kind to spot out, to thought that we had some changes that we wanted to make. So I'm going to click mine open right now. Take a look, does anybody have any comments or questions about the updated minutes? I'm actually refreshing my board docs as directed.
If we are going to be putting the action items in, are we going to be addressing progress on them in the next meeting? Or is, are they there for us to look at?
That, that's a great question and I.
This is offline conversation.
Yeah, we can talk about how we wanna do that. I think in, in some ways, it's just for us when we look back as, as trustees, like, oh, what were the things I wanted to work on? And it kind of, I, I recall it being, that was the motivation for it. I don't know if that's, the rest of the executive committee agrees with that, that's kind of how I understood why we were doing it. Kind of just to keep ourselves on track.
Right.
Thank you, so they're all updated and wonderful. Well, I shouldn't sway, are there any questions or comments about the updated minutes? Hearing none, I'd like to ask a motion from the floor to approve the updated minutes for December 2020. I have one from trustee Patera.
A second.
Seconded by Dr. Robinson, thank you so much and let's go vote. And the minutes have been accepted, the motion to acceptance passed unanimously, we vote barring the absence of midway. Thank you so much. And we're going to move down to item six, committee and trust and liaison report, sorry. First item will be trustee reporting out and upcoming events, would anyone like to share?
Is this the events or engagement with the library, I got distracted, this is events.
And I think, I thought trustee report out was also.
Yeah, so I really rate library interaction. We've been reading through the Magic Treehouse series and we needed book seven through as far as we could get. And I called Delaware, cause I saw on the OPEC that they had seven and the person on reference gave me like the entire shelf of Magic Treehouse. And so we're very happy and I love seeing curbside work that way. We were able to just, it felt like browsing the shelf, you know, he went over, he looked at what was on the shelf, he told us what we could get, we walked down to Delaware, it was a really great experience.
Wow, wonderful, thank you for that share. And I know for me, I've been a little overwhelmed, I don't have a lot to report out unless I forgot something, which happens, but I don't think so. Would anyone else like to report out or share about interaction with the library or upcoming events? Hearing no further input on that, thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Was there someone?
Yes, me.
Oh, hey, Pryor, thank you.
I'm sorry, um.
No, please.
But I was.
I'm working on my wait time.
I was just gonna say that, at housing, we have a newsletter that we're putting now, so we're trying to promote the library and all the services that are available and how their, you know, that kids can get on. And I was looking at the virtual classrooms and as mentioned earlier in the presentation, they're all booked up. So that's good with college or pharmacy, but as you know, we, we partnered with the Boys and Girls Club. But we've tried, I tried to do my best to get that information out there so that folks will know or the, especially with the book clubs, that's important, you know, just to get them off of Fortnite. So they can expand their minds in Minecraft, so. I was like, read a book about Minecraft, so you can just keep those juices flowing, but that's what we're trying to do.
Wonderful, thanks for that share and I'm gonna do another little wait, just in case anybody remembers anything, right? So I'm trying to wait until it's actually awkward, so sorry about that. Okay, not quite awkward. I can I can give any more. But hearing no further input. Uh, and thanks for the chance that we uh we heard. Uh, let's go to item six point two, which is that personnel committee report.
Thank you, President Finn. Um, I'm reporting as chair of the Personnel Committee. Um, we met and um we had a look at the organizational chart. Scott spent a great deal of time developing a chart so we can understand the staffing in each of the branches. And he's working on it and I I'm led to believe that in a future meeting, he will share it with all of us. It's really a work of art and what the best part was Scott said it did help him. It was a visual cue to um people and buildings and the size of the building and it's going to be very wonderful tool once it's completed. Um, we looked at the responsibilities of the Personnel Committee and we developed a draft of what we think is our responsibilities and what we should do. And as a result, um we're going to send it back to the Executive Committee for their review and their guidance on it to make sure it's what you want and how we need to move forward. The third thing we looked at was there was a list of employees that had been asked for last year. And um Scott let us know that tangible development will be looking at it. And I believe if I'm correct, Scott, report back to us on their findings.
Yes, and and Sarah, the the it's also been shared with our li- our legal representation as well. Um, because they also, they too want to do a an analysis of it.
Fabulous. Thank you for that update, Scott. And then finally, um I'm working on and I will have done by the end of this week a timeline for our committee and the deadlines we need to meet. And once that is developed and shared with the committee through electronic means, I will share it with the full board. That's the end of my report. Karen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, you did a great job. Thank you. Uh, I just want to thank also thank Scott for the organizational chart. I feel like with that process, even though everything's in flux right now, I feel like I have a better understanding of staffing throughout the organization than I have throughout my tenure as a trustee. So I feel like that's really helpful and I'm glad it's helpful for you as well. And I also want to thank um trustee Dallas for taking taking on writing the committee description and and kind of planning out the work and taking just going for it and taking yeah, basically being an example for the rest of the committees. An example we can all follow, you know, model we can follow.
Thank you. I got a little bit of that just on the sidelines from the email and it's very detailed and very thorough, so thank you. Um, we look forward to seeing the public size of these soon. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Personnel Committee Chairman Dallas? Great. So hearing none, uh I suggest and thank you again, many thanks for the great work and the great uh report out. Um, I suggest we move quickly through item six point three, which is the Upper Hudson Library Liaison Report. Uh, unfortunately, our Upper Hudson Library System Liaison uh is not here at meeting tonight as she's been excused. So I suggest that we catch up with her liaison activities at the next meeting. I hope no one has any objections to that. Uh, moving to the next uh agenda item, item seven, we're gonna hear all the parts of the wonderful Executive Director's Report.
So just a November wrap up and this will be short. Uh, services, uh the new, there's a New Times Union publication, Capital Region Memoirs, a pictorial history of the early years through the nineteen thirties. Um, we're noting this because they use several photos from our local history collection. And in return, we got several copies of the book to circulate, but something we're proud of, um I will uh Jim, who is our one of our branch managers at our Washington Avenue branch, also has been spending a lot of time digitizing and working on our local history collection. So things like this, I think are gonna pop up more often. Uh, another program note is the wellness and lifestyle programming that we're putting on is very popular and filling to capacity each session, which I think is fantastic. Operations, uh we've gotten our responses to the request for proposals for the How Generator MPV Array uh for the solar energy projects. Uh, we've selected a contractor and we're moving forward on that work. We have scaled down that project just a little bit. There were some cost overruns, but we're working that out now. Um, and IT is planning implementation of Wi-Fi at the select Albany Housing Authority locations. Uh, there were two patron incident report, there were two incident reports in November that had to do with patrons. Uh, one was a patron seemed to be a bit confused at our Bach branch and drove their vehicle up onto the walkway to retrieve their curbside items. Um, that was a little scary for staff. I don't believe that patron role will repeat that mistake again. Um, and we also did uh did send out a loss of library privileges letter to a patron at the Arbour Hill West Hill uh for continually taking off their mask and ignoring staff requests to wear their mask. Um, statistics, circulation, transactions, circulation in general and computer usage all remain steady. Uh, reference transactions have sustained that growth uh that they saw. We saw that spurt in August. Now they've remained steady, but we've held on to that growth. And per program participation continues to increase. Uh, majority of the program participations, the four point two percent has been virtual. So we're getting a lot of participation in those I can sign in and 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 interact with staff programming and you know, we're gonna see that growth and we're gonna continue that programming, as Amy said, for a extended period of time. And Br- uh Bridgette, we we, Amy did want to note that we are trying to expand expand our tutoring opportunities. So we know that that program's really popular, um and we're trying to expand that out and make that uh try to create more sessions for that. Um, I'll move over to my informational items. Uh, there was some update today, so if you have read this memo on Friday, uh there are a few things that have changed and I'll highlight those. First, uh some info, uh an informational item about UHLS funding and the Ulan Agreement. Uh, there will be nor no need for board action this board meeting, uh but we will need to vote on the Ulan Agreement in the near future. Uh, UHLS is receiving about twenty percent, a little bit more than a twenty percent cut from the state. Uh, this means a seven percent cut in staff salaries that the group staff had have agreed to. In other words, this doesn't mean no raises in the future. That means they've actually taken a cut um in their, a seven percent cut in their salaries, which worries me. I've expressed my concerns. Um, they have a very talented staff and I'm afraid of them losing those staff members, so I I have kind of phrased my concerns about that. Um, they will also be reducing a delivery route from three to two, which will mean our items will be in transit for a little bit longer. Um, UHLS staff have been offered additional PTO as compensation for the pay cuts, uh which I have also voiced a concern that I hope that they use it. Simultaneously, that means they will be less available to our staff uh to provide some of the services that they provide. Um, Tim, the director there was in disagreement, uh but I am concerned about a little bit of a reduction in services to the library because of this. Also, the system will uh will no longer subsidize the service needed for interlibrary loans. Um, so there's gonna be a few hundred dollars additional cost for us to continue to provide that service so we can do loaning to academic institutions and learn loaning to our public uh from academic institutions. Uh, APL is also looking at a five percent increase, which amounts to about fourteen hundred dollars to our twenty uh twenty twenty one Ulan Agreement. So um we are trying our best to not have a have a have a death by a thousand cuts um kind of scenario. Um, but you know, we we're gonna have to watch these budget lines very, very closely. Um, some bad news on the tax assistance assistance front, which is one of our more popular programs. Uh, the librarian who coordinates our program has received word from AARP that due to circumstances on their end, they will not be able to provide the program this upcoming season. So that's one partner down uh when it comes to tax preparation. We may also le- lose VITA as well, which may mean that there's no tax services whatsoever for patrons in twenty twenty one. Um, right now I am trying very hard and staff are trying very hard to find solutions and we will continue to work on that and we will make trustees aware of how that moves in the future. This is an information item on um tax cert payments. This is a a big uh something that that came about last year. This month's check register includes payments to past tax cert payments to the Albany City School District. The amount was about sixty three thousand five hundred and twenty one dollars. I think it actually might be eleven dollars less than that. Um but these are all, this fulfills all the past due invoices to the school district. So we have paid our, we we have paid the money we needed and legally needed to pay. It's much less than we originally expected, so it's good news for everyone. Uh, if you look, it is actually part of this December check registry. Um, ED time off, uh reminder to trustees, I will be on vacation from December twenty first to the thirty first. Um, I have not taken any vacation time since February due to the pandemic. I will be leaving a considerable amount of time on the table when the year turns. Um, so my goal is on December twenty first and my promise to my family is to turn off my work phone um and and only check my work email on a few, once a day. I think I promised my eight-year-old. Um, so if you're finding it hard to communicate with me, just give me ten days um to kind of just cool off. I'm gonna try to ignore everything and so and leave it in the hands of my trustee administration. Um, so there's that. Um, trustee questions related to the ED report? Uh, great question from Sarah Dallas. Given the culturally diverse community, are these crafts or the crafts that we're making available, are they in different languages? And are they reflective of the many cultures and religious practices found in our community? I'm assuming that they are not only Christmas themed, as are the story programs, et cetera. Um, Amy helped me put together this answer. As a whole, we remain secular and stick to season season themes. We have on occasion used a book that may have had a holiday element, but that is not the core of the presentation. We often try to partner with community organizations and hire vendors, facilitators, programming programmers from our own community. This past past month, we partnered with the Albany Barn for some arts and crafts programs. We strive to be inclusive but are severely limited in the immediate by how many programs we can provide and who we can rely on to encourage uh on to engage with if we have to pay or collaborate. Um, as for the language aspect, we do not currently have the capacity to include written instructions in a variety of languages. However, this is something that we should, and this is my editorializing, this is something we should think about and it will definitely be something that we put to the staff. Um, the other questions are all financial ones that um are all great financial questions that were brought up by Karen and I think answered. I'm not gonna read through those. Um, however, if you're interested in the in-depth answers from Adam, great questions, great answers. Um, they're all noted in this document. And I believe that's it. And I'll open it up to additional questions. Comments, concerns.
Just wanted to make a comment in regards to um Karen's comments and questions. Um, I'm glad she brought up a lot of the questions, but I certainly want to thank Adam for his clear um responses and gave me a better understanding of um a lot of those reports. He did a great job and I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Scott, I have a question regarding the tax assistance. Um, so if we are able to find providers or volunteers uh to help with tax assistance um because it's going on predominantly during the winter months, how is that envisioned for twenty twenty one as an online um help program? Um, because I'm just thinking um some people who may need tax assistance um could have less access to technology, um so it might be hard to do those um online and have online meetings. So I was just wondering what the thought was with that. Thanks.
That that's a great question, Sarah. We are thinking of it um as some in-person services. That's where we're really struggling. Um, a lot of organizations that do this use retirees and they're a little less comfortable with volunteering and physically being in the building. But one of our goals is to provide some attacks, some tax assistance in the building using our um, you know, using our already kind of established by appointment services that we were providing before we slid back into the most recent phase. So we are planning that, you know, just like programming, we're being very optimistic. Um, and my view is that I think by March, February, we'll be back to buy appointment service and my hope is us to find a partner in the community who can do some in-person tax preparation behind PPE, you know, at a distance with a large screen. That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to figure out at this point. Um, the other thing I wanted to note and thanks Becky, there is a a missing items memo that's included in informational items. Um, we've had some questions. We've done a little bit of a deep dive on this. Uh, I would like you to look at this document, um because we're actually gonna have Melanie and Stephanie, who is um the 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 department manager um of Collection Management Services come back next month. We're coming next month and that'll actually be the staff presentation. But this is some interesting facts and numbers. It's a great report that they've run. Um, and I was surprised to be wrong about a couple of things. Um, so it was really interesting to see. So um just look at it as an informational item and we're gonna do a deep dive next month.
Scott, I'm sorry, just one more um comment I wanted to make regarding the tax assistance.
Sure.
I wasn't a part of it when I was in law school, but there is a tax clinic at Albany Law uh and they do do some pro bono work. Um, so like I said, I I can't swear to exactly what they do, um but it may be worth reaching out to them.
I will definitely do that.
Well, thank you so much, Scott, as always, for the great, great work that you're doing and the staff is doing and the um detailed reporting out. Um, one more quick wait time to see if anybody has any more comments that uh come up for them. Okay, hearing no further comments or questions. Thanks again, Scott. Really wonderful and um much needed break coming up. Fully supported and we're gonna move on. We have no unfinished business in bonus eight. We're gonna move on to item nine. And uh we have some new business to address. And these are all voting items, I believe, so we're gonna need some moves from the floor when we hear about them.
So we're gonna, I'm sorry, I got a little a little lost there. Okay, so central library funds, uh this has been a, and this, there's been a change to this memo as well, or there's been a change to what's going on here as well. Uh, so I thought actually we may may have missed something. Let me just look real quick and I should have looked earlier. My apologies. Let me, I just uh Okay, there's been some changes. I'm gonna have to pull up um my notes real quick. So just some background, um every library system is required uh to designate a central library, which is what we are. The Albany Public Library, actually the Washington Avenue branch is the central library. The Albany Public Library, actually the Washington Avenue branch is the central library for both counties. Most of this is kind of, it's a, it's an old law. And it, the history of it, for those of you who are new to the board, is that, you know, back in the day, one library in the system was allowed more money to buy reference collection items, reference books, because that library tended to be open more hours, give people the ability to get in their horse and buggy and ride to the big city and do their reference work. So this is kind of developed and changed over the years. The Albany Public Library now, really our role as the central reference library is to kind of shepherd and do the collection development for the digital side for the system. So we, most of this money, like CBA funding, goes to just purchasing material and purch, purchasing e-material, almost, there's no purchasing of physical material. And also we make a, we, we are, we get a little bit of this money for, for staffing, for the staffing component that we do in the purchasing of all this e-material. So this year there was, as with everywhere else, we, sorry, I gotta search for something. There we go. So every year, wow, I think, I'm, I'm sorry. I think there was a little bit of a goof up on our end, but I'll, I'll try to clarify it a little bit. So we saw a 20% decrease in central library funding. The more, majority of these funds are pass-throughs, so we purchased the products and services for the central library. However, the central library development grants, grant staffing portion, which goes into our operating budget, was reduced by 10% or 5,100, oh, actually no, this memo is correct, I am sorry. So originally the, the central library committee came to us and said, you're going to get a 20% cut in this line. There were some savings that was found through e-magazines. That money was bandied about and I argued that we should at least get a little bit of that money back. So we went from a 20% reduction, which would have been a $10,000 cut to us, to now a 10% reduction, which was a $5,000 cut. We had already forecasted for the 20% cut in our previous budget modification, so this is kind of a win for us, not a loss for us. As a member of the Central Library Advisory Committee, I voted yes on the above changes. The loss of the money to the organization is regrettable. But as, you know, as I said, we had already assumed that we were going to lose some of that money. So the long and the short of it is we're going to get $5,000 less for the staff time that's put in to do this collection development, but at the same, but it's less so than the overall budget. We got, we, we finagled and got $5,000. This budget has been approved, I believe, by the Upper Hudson Library System. So now the, our board just has to approve that budget.
All right. Any questions about what Scott shared out?
The board should note that we will be losing ancestry.com as a system-wide service, but I know Melanie and her team are actually looking into us getting it for APL specifically.
Okay.
Scott, earlier when you said we didn't need to vote on something related to Upper Hudson, you meant the Upper Hudson, the Ulan, right?
Yes, I meant the agreement, not the central library.
And this is different, even though it's connected to Upper Hudson, this is, this is different. We do need to vote on this today.
This is separate and it is, does need to be voted on by the board today.
Thank you for clarifying.
So I'd like to, hearing no questions at the moment, I'd like to get a motion from the floor to approve this change as it was outlined by Scott.
Don't move, Matt, this is Sarah Dallas.
Thank you, Sarah Dallas, as suggested by Dr. Robinson. Before we vote, are there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, I suggest we open the voting. Great, so the motion to accept the change in the central library funding budget has passed unanimously with a vote from all present. Thank you.
Matt, Matt, this is Sarah Dallas. Before we move on to the next, or should I wait until later on? I have a question going back to Upper Hudson Services for its members. It takes me a while to think things out.
Oh, I'm the same, I'm exactly the same. I would suggest that since we just talked about Upper Hudson and we're going, we're not really going back there, would you like to close your question now?
Yes, please. Upper Hudson, as I understand it, provides services to the member libraries in both counties. And I haven't looked at the Upper Hudson Plan of Service in a long time, a very long time. But I was wondering when the service, when the plan of service came about and when the evaluations are done regarding the services Upper Hudson provides to the member libraries, okay? I would think delivery is one of the most important services done by the system. I'm also thinking that the biggest resource Upper Hudson has is its very talented staff. Now, if the staff is working considerably less and less available, and I understand it's a pandemic and I understand all of that. So it seems like two services that the system provides for the members are being drastically reduced. Maybe drastically is too harsh a word, but being reduced. Would it help if the Albany Public Library Board write a letter of concern? Or leave it alone?
So I'm leaving that question, I have a thought on it too. I'm leaving my question, just got to answer first as the director, who's part of the director committee there.
I don't see anything wrong with the board voicing their concern at the, you know, Arlene, as our representative, should maybe be, and we've done this before. I know Matthew has made, shared a statement before expressing their concerns. Like I said, I shared it with the DA, but I don't know if the, the director's representative is going to bring that to the, I don't even think that our DA rep was at the board meeting that I raised this concern. So I, yeah, I would love, and love is, is a little bit of a strong term. I think it, I, I think it would be, I think it would be good for this concern to be brought up. I don't, I, I wanted to raise the concern myself because I don't, well, I don't want to fight this. I understand it's a very, very hard decision. I do think we all should be on record for expressing our concerns and not just kind of letting this go by like, okay, you gotta do what you gotta do. This is kind of a, you gotta do what you gotta do, but just keep in mind, we don't want to see these things erode at all. So long and the short of it is, I can't tell the board what to do, but I, I think it would be the first, it would not be the first time that the board has made a strong statement at the Upper Hudson Board level. And I think it would be, knowing the appreciation that was given for this being, for me stating my concerns at DA, I'm sure it would be, also be appreciated if those concerns were brought to the, brought to the UHLS Board by our representative, you know, a statement from the board by our representative.
I agree, I think that's where I was leaning as well. So Sarah, is this something that you think we could probably get done by email and then we can communicate that, that to Arlene? That the board, the UHLS Board usually meets tomorrow. So it would be a little late to come up with a really strong, cohesive statement. We could try by email.
We should do that for Arlene. I think, I think they're going to go ahead and vote it through anyway. And I think our letter won't make a much difference because I could appreciate the financial situation the system is in. But I'd like to have something written from the Albany Public Library Board of Trustees on letterhead regarding this issue.
Okay, would you be interested in spearheading that with our, our link?
I don't think I'm the trustee to do this on this board.
Okay, well, I'll work with Arlene, but I'd like to have it open to other trustees who want to participate.
I'd be happy to review.
I, I don't know that I have the bandwidth to do a, like the first write-through, but I'm happy to do word smithing and review and editing and.
Okay, so I'd like to contact Arlene directly sometime, probably tomorrow, and try and work out something. And my suggestion is that we try to get this done through email with the input of anybody who chooses to take a look at it on email. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, and I think it's a great suggestion. Okay, thank you for the suggestion and thanks, everybody who wants to take a quick look at it.
And, and Matthew, I'm going to forward to the board my response to the, to Tim, so you know my, thank you.
Okay, good, that'll help. All right then, any other, any other discussion about 9.1? Hearing none. I like that handshake from trustee Patera, that was good, it's a good signal. Moving on to 9.2, we have some updated regulations about document retention. Is there someone who's going to walk us through that one?
Bob, if you could do the honor?
I'm not sure what your honor would you like me to do, Scott? Just come up with the pervigge?
The retention and disposition schedule for New York local government records.
You mean just explain it?
Yeah, just a quick overview, that needs to be done.
We're on 9, we're on 9.2 now.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, the, well, so actually I think Sarah brought this to everyone's attention, which is ironic because SCD hasn't really communicated this out to anybody, including the school districts that it's affected by. And they obviously have other things going on, but in the middle of everything, they have fundamentally changed the way they want local governments, including school districts and, and public libraries, to deal with retention of records. They publish records retention schedules as part of their regulations. And for years, there's been four or five different schedules that you choose depending on what type of organization you are. There's one for schools, there's one for municipalities, there's one for other ancillary organizations, and that one has been the one that libraries have used. They are now apparently consolidating everything into a single retention schedule called the LGS1, Local Government Records 1. And they are requiring that all local governments, including public libraries, adopt that new schedule no later than January 1st. So it really doesn't change much for you. The actual retention periods in the schedule are not markedly different than what they were before. It's really just an organizational matter so that everybody's on the same schedule. The schedule was added to board docs, I think, yesterday. The resolution has been up since the original packet was, went out. But ultimately, this resolution would have you adopt the new schedule and agree that you'll only dispose of records in accordance with the minimum retention periods that are in that schedule.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for Bob? Or, or anyone about this retention change?
Yeah, can I just briefly ask, Scott, is there any problem with implementing this on, on staff's end?
You're on mute, Scott.
No, and in reality, it's, it kind of dovetails with what we've been trying to do over the last few months with being better at document retention. So I don't think this will cause any additional work and it kind of is supportive of what we're already thinking about.
Great, thanks.
Tom, as a general matter, most, most places like the library don't throw things out. So what the real effort of the retention schedule is, is to set schedules by which you can actually get rid of things. And I, I will tell you, in dealing with the library for a while, Stephanie Simon and I have from time to time referred to the former schedule, which was the MI1, to figure out when we could get rid of certain categories of records. So Stephanie certainly knows how to use this stuff, it's just we now need to use this new schedule.
Okay, good question, good info. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to see if we can get a motion from the floor to accept the resolution for us.
I'll make a motion to accept this resolution.
Dr. Robinson, move.
Dallas seconds.
And Dallas second. Wonderful, any discussion? Hearing none, let's go vote. Is anybody seeing the result? I'm not seeing that. There they are, thank you, Rebecca. So the motion to adopt the retention schedule as discussed carries unanimously by all present with a vote. Thank you so much. Next item, 9.3, we can just very quickly go over the board evaluation from the, was that in November meeting? Yeah. Am I bringing that up or Rebecca, do you want to bring that up? Okay, here it is. So everybody very kindly filled out their Google form and as you can see, the comments were generally positive. I'm wondering if, just a quick question for the board, if the questions are capturing what you want to say? Or if we need any changes that you noticed, and I don't want to belabor this item. So I'll just be silent for a moment. Hearing no question or discussion, I suggest that we move on to the next item. I think everybody had a chance to look, thank you for bringing it up, Rebecca. We're now going into item 10, continuation of service plan. Uh, we're now going into, uh, item ten, continuation of service plan.
So you'll notice that, um, there's two items, there's a pandemic operations plan and also an updated COSP. Uh, if you go to where it says updated COSP, um, it will open up the, the, the the COSP update memo, and this also will touch upon the pandemic operations plan as well. Um, so the pandemic operation plan is, uh, developed in accordance to New York state legislation, I'm not going to do the number, uh, as of this memo, legal is still reviewing the plan. Uh, however, we feel that most of the administration's part of the plan is completed. Um, we wrote this with guidance from Mid Hudson Library System, Southern Tier Library System, Southern Anorondak Library System, Onondaga County Live, Public Libraries as well. Um, they were all, all of those systems and those directors were very helpful in guidance. Uh, we actually developed this using a template provided by the North Country Library System to their users. That was brought to our attention by the Mid Hudson Library System and I believe South, the Southern Anorondak as well. So this kind of follows the best practice of what library systems around the state are advising, um, their libraries to do. Uh, in accordance with the law, this plan will need to be reviewed by the union, we've already scheduled, we've begun to schedule that meeting as well. Um, and we will have a draft presentation to them after legal has reviewed the legalese on the first few pages of the POP. Uh, the POP document will replace the COSP, so they look very similar. Um, once it is accepted by the board, we don't want to run two documents in tandem. Uh, after Becky, Stephanie and I worked on both these documents today, we don't want another. We literally had to spend like two hours on these documents with our eyes crossing, making sure both reflected each other. So we'd like to merge the COSP into the pandemic operation plan document to move forward. Uh, so please review, uh, I welcome questions for the next four weeks. Um, and this will be put on as new, um, new business in January for the board to decide to vote on. And that then could get moved to old business, um, uh, for the February meeting, I hope it doesn't take that long. This plan is due into the state by March, I think that's a ridiculous timeline, I think they should have actually made it due this past September. Um, however, that is what it is, uh, we are using it, so that's actually a usable document, something that we can refer to like the COSP. Um, so again, this is for you to review, know that the first few pages of this document are going to be looked over by our legal representation. And you will notice much of it looks like the COSP, really the only big change is is designating, um, who will operate during another pause. Um, who is required, uh, keep in mind that our mayor has said that we are a, um, we can operate during the pause because we're, because of, we've been designated as, I forgot the term, losing the term. Oh, was that Brenda?
Didn't you?
Yeah, so we've been designated as essential, um, by our control rooms, so we have a little bit more freedom there. Um, but that, that's in the plan, who's expected to go in, it's mostly facilities, uh, our CDCs to keep an eye on the building. We plan to schedule if we do go into a pause, which I think is possible. Um, instead of having the building empty, we will have them, uh, we will have staff, the community engagement clerks, facility staff, and some of the library staff in those buildings, just to keep an eye on them. Uh, we did, you know, see that we had some issues, control issues at some of our physical plant, not having people in the building. So we will have kind of people in the building to keep an eye on, make sure the toilets are flushed on a regular basis and things of that nature. And do some facilities planning as well, so again, the POP will replace the COSP hopefully next month, so uh, we don't have two documents running in tandem, please review this document, it's very important and I totally welcome all of your questions to them. So then we'll move to changes in the continuation of service plan, and there has been some changes because there's been developments in the last forty-eight to twenty-four hours. Um, so first, new, uh, phases, so this is on page fifteen and sixteen. Uh, the library administration feels that curbside pickup and other forms of alternative delivery for library material can be done safely when the county has a slightly higher positivity rate. So we have changed the test positive rate threshold to three, between three and five point nine percent for phase one B. Uh, that's a relatively large chunk, but we feel comfortable because we don't have people in the building. As of right now, if we were not to change this, we would probably be stopping curbside in about two weeks. Uh, we have changed the test positive rate threshold for between six and six point nine for phase one A. Uh, the idea of phase one A is to do some needed kind of work, uh, on the collection, so to have staff in the building. But also to have staff ready with the hope that we're going to be going up a phase relatively quickly. However, if we, we would shut down all operations outside of kind of essential staff if the test positive rate now reaches seven percent for fourteen consecutive days. That is possible, um, and that will be something we'll be watching on a regular basis. Uh, we've also changed phases, uh, phase two B will suspend redundancy scheduling. So we operated within a phase two B, but we weren't really able to do everything we wanted to do in that phase. Uh, we know that redundancy scheduling really cut our staff in half, so it hampered that. So, uh, phase two will get rid of redundancy scheduling, we will make sure that we have limited staff in the building, but a bit more and some people on call to be able to come into the building so that we can maintain services. Phase two B will also permit outside programming, so our hope is that we'll probably be in phase two B in warmer weather, so we're planning for that programming. Uh, and then phase four B will allow limited indoor programming, we're doing this keeping in mind that maybe the vaccine will reduce the, uh, the positivity rate much lower. Make things a little bit safer to do inside, but also, uh, work that our facilities staff are doing in terms of air quality and air control into the building. Um, and the fact that we'll probably be opening doors and things of that nature. Um, all programming will be restricted to residents of the city until phase five. The reason for that is because, as Amy pointed out in her, um, excellent, and Julia, their excellent presentation is that we will be, we will be allowing very small groups to our programming. And if we're, if we're, if we're restricting size, then we should actually be opening it up to our staff first. Um, and then a, a, a question that's come up several times, and this has to do with minimal standards for public libraries. We perceive having our public restrooms, uh, open without restriction in phase three B, but that's still, um, that's one I'm still going to keep my eye on and I'm a little concerned with, um, some of, some of the, the, uh, studies that have been coming out have been very concerning about public restrooms transmissibility and, um, air quality in those bathrooms, so that's, uh, we're doing that, but that's a to be continued, however, I feel very confident with the other changes. Uh, we've also changed the safety plan on page six and COVID nineteen quarantine protocol on page nine. This change reflects, and this is one of the reasons why there's been developments the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours, the CDC has changed their quarantine guidance, uh, as of now, ten days, seven to ten days instead of fourteen days. So that's reflected in our saving, uh, safety plan and our quarantine protocol. Um, also, we've changed our guidance for moving forward and in reverse, so those, that graph that's on page fifteen and sixteen. Uh, we will now be using Forward New York site instead of the ACT COVID site. ACT COVID is not updating their information on the weekends, um, where the Forward New York, uh, site typically updates all of the information around three or four o'clock, depending on if Cuomo has had a presser, if the, if the governor does a press conference, that information's put up much quickly. Um, and on Sundays, it tends to be put up fairly quickly too, so whoever's got the job on Sundays does their job very well. Um, but we typically, uh, we, we feel like that's a little bit quicker now than the ACT COVID site, so that's why we've changed that there, um, phase observation, um, we now know from my email yesterday, we've moved back to phase one B, so we are no longer taking by appointment service and that we are now only doing curbside. And that has to do with the skyrocketing test rates that have been in the community. Um, look for emails from me pretty much twice a week about where we are in terms of test positive rate and the COSP. Uh, there's a pretty good update on phase two planning, we're always planning for more, um, and how we can do things better, I'm not going to go through those, but you know, just, uh, one thing I want to highlight is case management appointments. Um, that's our, our person who's kind of does that more hands-on community support. Uh, they will, when we do appointments, be taking appointments, but continuing to do their work, uh, virtually and through the phone. Um, everything went really smooth in the last time we were in two ways, so it'll go much smoother, um, in the future. Uh, we did receive, that we know of, uh, three feedback from the community, three letters. Uh, the first, I just, it was sent physically to the branch. So, um, it's a very nice letter talking about how they're very appreciative of everything we've been doing for them. Uh, including curbside and that they're, you know, concerned about the staff, which is very sweet to hear, but, you know, appreciative of the work we've been doing and understanding that the library has to go very slowly in this. Um, so it's very, very sweet letter specifically to the Pine Hills branch. Uh, we also received one response from our eNotes email newsletter reporting on the opening of Pine Hills for in, in building appointment services. This patron was actually surprised we were moving forward, um, Stephanie did a really quick response to this individual, which I thought was really appropriate, that just said, you know, look at our continuation of service plan and this is what we're following. And that it's updated and can be watched, how, how the, how the, um, how the, uh, the sausage is made, or I like to say burrito is made, it's a little nicer than sausage. Um, that can always be viewed on our YouTube channel, so she had a really good response. Uh, we did receive in the last, uh, after the e-note that went out about us rolling back services, a message from a patron who is claiming that we've minimal to no service since March. Um, and also questioning whether or not we should be paying staff. Uh, my response, my very measured response, um, is on this memo as well. Um, you know, I just pointed out that, uh, we have been doing a lot and what we have been doing has changed and actually made it so that we have, need more staff, not less, but I have pointed out that we have lost a little bit of staff due to retirements and them quitting and that we haven't backfilled all those positions. Um, and you know, just that we've discussed furloughs and layoffs, um, however, it's costly and will probably impact us being able to roll services back up when we need them, but I also added, and you know, I, I don't know if this is a stand, I can't say this is a stance of trustees, but this is most definitely a stance of me as the executive director. Um, that these are staff who have been loyal and served the public, uh, for several decades and they have stood by us and we will stand by them whenever it is fiscally possible. So, you know, I, I, I do want to note that we also, I also said it's morally questionable to take away pay and health coverage of our talented and dedicated staff during unprecedented times, so, um, you know, the pandemic's stressful and difficult for all of us and I, I feel, I understand why patrons have told us this and informed us of their opinions on this, um, and I just hope that, um, the board sees my response and understands where some of my thinking is when it comes to staff reductions during a pandemic.
Thank you, Scott, any questions for Scott about the updated C O S P?
Thank you, Scott, for that, and I love your response in regards to supporting the staff. Um, very well written, thank you so much for that and thank you to the staff. Um, just like you said, great dedicated staff, appreciate everything that they do and we have to continue to support them.
Thank you.
I'll add that I think the presentation this, uh, earlier by, uh, Julia and Amy made it really clear how hard the staff have been working to pivot during this difficult time, I heard in Amy's voice just the kind of exhaustion from doing all this work and yet still they're here and working really hard and trying to figure out how to do it better and how to change the work in the future, so if that person is concerned about what they're seeing, maybe they should, you know, watch some of our board meetings and learn about what the board is doing and the staff are doing.
What we're seeing from complaints from patrons are patrons who miss the more traditional being able to go in and peruse the shelves, which we all miss, I miss, um, so we understand that, so we're trying to communicate. You know, the library is more than just a building and a collection of books, it's a group of dedicated people from the trustees to the administration and definitely to the staff, so, you know, I, I understand the frustration that some of the members of the public are having, because we are reducing what's traditional kind of bread and butter library services, but this is a time for us to showcase and change what we're doing and, and to be honest, I don't see us going, doing away with virtual programming for a considerable amount of time, because there will be individuals for the next year who will not be comfortable being in a public space and are going to still want library service.
Any other questions for Scott?
Yeah, I, I wanted to ask, um, when, when we do eventually approve the P O P, will, will we be held to whatever we submit as our plan going forward, or are we? Because I think we.
We lost you, Matt.
Um, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Matthew.
Oh, okay.
Miss Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, and we lost you, Tom. He's frozen, there we go.
Are you sorry about that, should I say my question again?
Yes, please, we lost someone.
Yeah, um, so, update our continuation of service plan anytime we want to. The question is, once we submit to that version of it?
No, so we will be able to continue with our process of being able to, to change this month by month. Um, if you look on page three, there's actually, I love this, and I wish we had done it with the COSP originally. Um, there, there is on page two, um, whenever we make a change, we just have to note it in this record of changes. And we'll probably refile it, we'll send, you know, we're, we're going to send this over to the control room anyway, um, and to the state, so we'll just resend it whenever we do an update.
Great, um, thank you, and are there any other questions? About the POP or the COSP? Okay, hearing none, as I understand it, we are going to be voting on the updated C O S P continuation service plan. Oh, I understood, yay. Um, I'm looking for a motion from the floor to approve the updated continuation service plan.
So moved.
By Karen's drawing, secretary extraordinary.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Robinson, doctor extraordinary, there we go, oh, discussion. I almost forgot. Hearing none, let's vote. And the motion to accept the updated COSP, uh, continuation service plan carries unanimously, unanimously with a vote of all trustees present, thank you. Uh, thanks again, Scott, lots of great information and we all have time, uh, thank you for putting the, uh, P O P out there early so we have time to look at it, to vote on it next time. Um, wonderfully all thought out and great, so let's move on to our next item, which is, uh, public comment.
No public comment has been received.
No public comment, hearing no public comment, uh, as far as I know, we're now moving to executive session tonight, is that true? That seems to be true, uh, so let's move to the final item, lucky thirteen, adjourned next, do I have a motion from the floor to adjourn?
I place a motion that will adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Pryor moves on the motion to adjourn, second.
Sarah Dallas.
Sarah Dallas, seconded, discussion? Let's vote. And the motion carries unanimously by all trustees present to adjourn, um, I don't have any. I don't have any extra announcements, did anyone have anything they wanted to announce or say before we all depart from the Zoom?
Hope everyone has safe and happy holidays.
Yeah, same.
Thank you, yes. Agreed and wonderful, and back at you, everyone. All righty, so hearing no comments, after that lovely comment, thank you so much. I think we're all ready to leave the Zoom meeting, thank you, everybody.
Night, everybody, have a good night.
Bye bye, thanks all.